Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Shmuel Schuster. Welcome to the Friends of Liberty Republican Club, and a special welcome to our great Commissioner Marcy Woodward. From whom you're here shortly. First, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. The plea remains standing for the implication as we commemorate Yom Ha'atzikarun for Israel's fallen, a country that rose from the ashes of the Holocaust and is now celebrating its 75th year this month, the only democracy in a sea of hostility and the valued ally of our country. I'm going to read from Psalm 130, a song of assents, "Out of the depths I have called you, to you, God Hashem. My Lord, hear my voice; let your ears hear the sound of my plea. If you, God, keep our sins in mind, whom my God could survive? For with you is forgiveness, so that we fear only you. I hope, for God Hashem, my soul hopes, and for his word I wait. My soul looks to God more than to watch me; waits for the morning. Wait Israel for God; for with God there is love and kindness, and with him there is great salvation; and he will surely redeem Israel for all its iniquities. Amen." You may be seated.
Good evening. Commissioner Marcy Woodward is a 20-year resident of Boca Raton and was elected in November 2022 as Palm Beach County District 4 Commissioner. Commissioners? Yes, absolutely. Very clear. She cares deeply for her community and remains dedicated to representing the people of Palm Beach County. She maintains an open-door policy and welcomes the community input. Moreover, she looks forward to providing assistance to her constituents and open communication concerning concerned in policy, services, and programs. It is my honor to welcome Commissioner Marcy Woodward to the podium.
See, she can stamp behind that.
I have the opposite problem. Hi. As she said, my name is Marcy Woodward. Live in Boca with my husband and our dogs for coming up in 20 years. To start with, I never thought I would run for a political office. Always paid attention to national politics because the president and everything in DC, I thought, was the most important thing that I could concern myself with. Until 2020 came along, and like many of you probably realized, there's a whole world happening right here in Palm Beach County that I had not been paying attention to. Didn't know who any of these people were. Didn't know if we were not blessed with children. So, school board was just that thing over there. County Commissioner, city government, all of that. Didn't affect my life, or so I thought. And after coming to a realization there's this whole world here, I helped a few campaigns. Josie here was the first one I actually ever helped on. She ran for city council in 2021. And that was my first kind of foray into any of this. And helped a few other campaigns. And Bob Weinroth was the county commissioner for the seat that I now sit in for District 4. And he was running unopposed for a long time because he had raised a lot of money. And people kept telling me, no, no one's going to run for that seat because he's got so much money. And I tried very hard to find other candidates that I could help support to get into this role. And it sort of became apparent that I needed to step up and do the thing I was trying to get others to do. No one else wanted to. So, in the final week of qualifying, I filed my paperwork, and we hit the ground running for the next six months. Did a completely grassroots campaign, knocked on doors, got my little flamingo signs in as many yards as would take them, went to meetings like this, and just went all over the place talking to people, letting them know. As you can probably tell, I'm not a very polished politician. I'm just a regular citizen who wanted to get involved. And thanks to the way the founding fathers set up our government, I can. And as any of us, we have the right to do this. It's not an easy job. The joke all along was once, you know, you can rest on November 9. The election was November 8. And I was like, oh, all right, if I get there. Never, I guess it didn't quite occur, what happens when you win? That 100 miles an hour you thought you were doing during the campaign just kicked into a whole new gear. And a couple of things I did not anticipate upon winning was how quickly I was going to have to vote on issues that had been in the works for a year, maybe two years, land use deals, or all kinds of different projects that came before me that I had no history with, other than what little clippits that I had seen when I watched a meeting, but not having real inside information, not enough to make a qualified decision. So, I spent every waking minute trying to bring myself up to speed as quickly as possible. And even then, it wasn't enough because it's just a lot of information. But staff has been good. And it's interesting because I feel probably the most important part of my job is really just discernment. Because I will meet with staff and get their side of the story. Then I meet with an applicant or whoever it is is bringing a project forward, get their side of the story. And then I get to hear from groups like you, constituents, who come in and tell me their side of the story. And it's my job to kind of find where in the middle the truth lies. And it's somewhere in there. Each one has their own version of the truth. But I still have to vote a yes or a no. Even a couple of times with issues that came up quickly that I was like, wait, do I have to actually vote on this? I feel like I need more information. And the information you get, the information you get, and you have to vote. You can't even abstain. So, it's important that we do our due diligence and take as many meetings as we can and learn all of this. It is possible. It's daunting at first, but it's possible for any one of us to get involved at this level. And one of the more interesting things that I found in this new job is I have a lot of board appointments that I get to make. And there are so many different boards in the county that involve building the policies that we all have to live under. And it starts with these community groups or citizens advisory groups or anything from traffic and building to housing, water, all kinds of stuff. And I get to make appointments to those. And I'm slowly working myself through the process of looking who's on the boards. I've met several, and I like them, and I've kept them where they are. I've replaced a few, and I am working towards meeting the rest of them. But part of my job, I just, Brian Stenberg, actually, who just filed to run for city council for Boca, I was able to put him, yes, go Brian, literally Republican. I was able to put him on the Planning Commission board. And he at first was like, I don't know, I'm trying to work on Boca stuff. And I was like, well, I need someone on this board because my appointee, who I did like, had a medical issue and had to come off. So, I needed to replace him. And we talked, and I was like, part of me having a personal relationship with the people I get to put on the board is they get to talk to me about stuff that's coming or let me know how things are shaping before it gets to me, which helps me become a more informed and educated commissioner, which is what I have to be. Because everything that I vote on, there's no take backs. It's once you start down the road of any of this stuff, you better know what you're doing because there will be unintended consequences to all of our votes. And I'm trying to minimize that as much as possible. But being able to rely on citizens that I know share my values, our values, it's a big help to me and honestly, to all of us, the more of us that get involved in these groups. And I get to send, Josie helps me part-time. She was my campaign manager. Thank you, Josie. But she goes to a lot of the community meetings that I cannot attend because it's during board meetings or just I can't make it to all of the invitations that I have. But she goes, and she also kind of tells me back because we have Cobra, the Delray Alliance, the Homeowners Association, federations, there's all of these different groups. And it's the same thing. She's telling me so many of these are filled, honestly, they're Democrat organizations that represent entire communities. And then they come to us as a commission and tell us what the community wants. So, if you're not keeping an eye on these HOA groups or these different federations that represent your community and you make sure that you're voting at people who represent you, well, they're representing you by voice. So, if you're not paying attention to who they are, they have the ear of the commission or the city councils where you live, and even send people to Tallahassee to influence legislation at that level. So, when I say we have an entire little Washington DC, right here in Palm Beach County, I'm not kidding. It exists here. The swamp is here. I joke that I'm swimming with sharks a lot of times. And I am, and it can make you a little paranoid. But I get to meet with so many citizens like you. I get to go to groups like this. And I am getting to know my fellow commissioners a lot better. And they're not as awful as I kind of thought some of them would be. Even the Democrats. So many of the issues we have to deal with are really nonpartisan issues. Thankfully, I would not want to have to be so politically divided the way it is in Tallahassee and especially in DC. Thank you for even attempting to go there. I don't have the stomach for it. But here, we're neighbors. We're communities. We, each of us, live in the districts that we represent. So, decisions that we make not only affect us, but those close to us, our neighbors. And it's like I tell people, whenever you're walking your dog, you see your neighbor in the driveway, whatever it is, and you talk, the issues you talk about, it's not often these divisive partisan issues that we know exist out there. On this level, we get to just be neighbors together. And I prefer that way of governing. I mean, there's seven of us on the board, and we get into some very interesting discussions. If you've ever watched a county commission meeting, sometimes they can be incredibly dry. And then suddenly, it's like, oh, it gets spicy. And next thing you know, this one down here is saying something. And the interesting thing to know about our board meetings is we have sunshine laws, which means we are not allowed to talk to each other unless we're in a board meeting. I mean, we can talk about what you had for dinner last night or something like that, but we can't talk about anything that's specific to what we will be voting on, which does make some of what we do a little challenging because we'll go weeks between meetings sometimes. And then stuff comes up. And I'm like, I would love to know how, how do they feel about this? What are we going to do? How do we move forward? And we can't do it until we have a board meeting. But you should know, if you ever watch those board meetings, the conversations we're having up there are, they're real because it's the only time we get to talk to each other. And sometimes when it gets spicy, then that's where the interesting parts happen. But those are the types of discussions that we should be having. And I like that there's seven different commissioners because if we all were exactly the same and agreed on everything, we would not really be representing Palm Beach County. We're pushing 1.6 million people in this county and have everything from very urban city high-rises to complete rural farmland and everything in between. And the extreme, extreme wealth down to very impoverished communities. And again, everything in between. And every ethnicity, all the different countries that are here. So, it's a wonderfully diverse community that we represent. And I do appreciate that we have a mixed board. I do appreciate that we now outnumber them with four Republicans and three Democrats. Woo! Thank you. And for those of you that don't know, that's a switch from just last year because there was one Republican and six Democrats. Two of us got elected in November, and DeSantis made an appointment to Kerner, who was a Democrat, and replaced him with Michael Barnett, the chair, well, now former chair of the Republican Party of Palm Beach County. So, it was quite a big shift to happen in just a couple of months. And I can tell you, it did send some shock waves up there. And a lot of the staff are Democrats. We don't talk about it, but they were afraid of, who are these MAGA Republicans are going to come in here and burn down everything that we built, blah, blah, blah. And it's been interesting because they, I think it's been a pleasant surprise for them to realize that we are there to get the job done. And that's what I ran on. And I can't speak for the other commissioners, but we want to do the work and not so much going out and dining ourselves and just showing up for pictures and everything, which is honestly, I think, how I got here because that's what my predecessor did. And I'm here to do the work. I want to put the time in, and I'm appreciative that I get to talk to groups like you to let you know what we're doing. Thanks for the reminder. I do send out a monthly newsletter, and I have social media cards. Josie has it back there. I've been told, I don't write my newsletter. I have someone, one of my staff members, that does it. But I've been told that the newsletter is super helpful, and everyone should get it because we talk about, I talk about what I'm doing in the county, different parts of county government, issues that have happened throughout the week, different legislative issues because we do work closely with our state House and Senate representatives for the state on legislative issues that are coming down from Tallahassee. So, it's the stuff that we need to know about as well. And anything from roads, I mean, the Palmetto Park Bridge has been a bone of contention. I don't think you live there. I'm sorry. It's going to be probably October at this point. So, yeah, initial updates were as early as March, which obviously didn't happen because that was last one. And we're just, it keeps getting pushed and pushed and pushed. But the good thing of my new position is I get to ask questions, and they have to answer me. So, when you're a citizen, I know, I felt like I was banging my head against the wall to get answers from the local government. And part of why I ran as well because there wasn't a very good connection between me and my representative for me to get answers. It was usually, thank you for your comment. We'll look into it. Whereas now, when I ask a question, it gets forwarded because I'm the boss, and it's weird. But I'm one of them. And I get to push stuff through. So, when you send me your questions and I forward them, it carries more weight. I don't love that part of it, but it is how it is. And I'm happy to use it for my constituents because that's how we get stuff like this done. We have local government so that it can represent local people. And you have access to me. You have my office phone number. I do have staff, which at first I thought it was ridiculous. Why do county commissioners need three staff members? It's not enough. I mean, wow. I'm surprised at how much there is to it. But without them, I would be buried in trying to even answer emails. And they do a good job. They respond to every single person that sends us an email. And if it's a road question or any number of questions, we will forward that to the right department, copying you to let you know where it's being sent to and that the commissioner requested this be followed up on. And then they will give it some time and then follow up with the constituent or with the department to make sure that the question got answered. And that was something I felt I never had before. And I hope to make sure that all of the people who I represent feel that way with my office. Because if nothing else, I see that I'm a representative, and I want to be able to represent you and any concerns that you have. It's not been perfect yet. It will never be perfect. But we are a work in progress. But the biggest part for you to know is that you, I know who got me here. It was the voters. I spent $33,000 on this campaign, and Bob spent almost $600,000. So, money does not buy elections? It helps, sure. But I know who got me here, and it's regular people. It's regular voters. And I hope to keep it that way. And I hope that I spend this four years doing a good enough job that the next campaign can be similar to this. And hopefully, I will get eight years total because it's a two-year term, or two, four-year terms. And I could do this for eight years. I'm not supposed to say this. I get in trouble when I say this. But I don't want to go anywhere else. And I want to go to Tallahassee or DC. Palm Beach County is my home. This is where I want to be. I'm so happy here. And whatever time I can spend doing this, I want it to be for this area, for Palm Beach County. So, with that, anybody have any questions?
Okay. I heard, I listen to Brian Mudd in the morning sometimes when I get him over here. He said that in the last, like, three, four years, the budget has...
That the budget has increased by 40%, which is way more than the inflation. And that there's like 75 taxing authorities in Palm Beach County, which I think most of them are in here, Bailey Wick. So, what can we do to bring this under control?
Thank you for that. I don't know about the 40% number. I can tell you, this current year that we're in, it's a $6.7 billion budget for the county. That is a B billion. And that's just the county. There's 39 municipalities who also are taxing districts. And like for Boca, I live in the city of Boca, so I have city of Boca taxes. I'm in the Parks and Beach District, which is a taxing district. The library is a taxing district. There's a Health Department District. That's a taxing district. I believe where at my house, and we have seven taxing districts that we pay on our property taxes. And one of them's county, and then all of the others that come with that. School Board is a taxing district. If you look, that's a pretty big chunk on most of your property taxes is the school board. That's a separate taxing district. It's daunting and overwhelming to look at those numbers. But I can tell you, even today, we had, one of our workshops was about Palm Trans, which gets paid for with, a chunk of that gets used at Valorem dollars, which is your property tax dollars that goes into that. And we had a lengthy discussion on how to make it more efficient, how to bring down some of the costs, especially when it comes to the parent transit, which is the disability that we use. It's definitely a needed and it's a required federal government thing for us to have. But if you were to watch that workshop today, and I encourage anyone to watch it, it was very interesting. There's a huge chunk of money right there in that one that we're looking at $50 million of the annual budget that should definitely be addressed on just this one issue. So, as we go through each workshop, we are working towards eliminating some of this, looking at ways to be more efficient. I'll tell you, I'm surprised at how much all of the other commissioners felt the same way because I believe everyone's feeling it from their constituents that inflation is hurting us. And whatever we can do to help lower that, everyone's on board with that. Even the Democrats are on board with this because they're getting feedback as well, that you've got to do something. And it's true. We have a huge budget. And I will tell you, even Mac Bernard, who's a Democrat, he said that he would not support doing anything to raise the budget on any of this until we work on our efficiencies. Because if we raise the budget, you're going to find a way to spend it. And he did not want to be a part of that. And I was like, thank you. I mean, I was very pleased to hear that, and even coming from a Democrat. So, I don't know if us flipping the board has maybe involved them a little bit to be more fiscally conservative. But it's coming. And a few workshops that we've had already are in the works. The summer is when we will deal with next year's fiscal budget. The fiscal year starts October 1. So, we're going to have our first workshop in June on the budget for next year. And I honestly don't know where it's going. They talked about how they lowered military rate last year. But if you understand how your property taxes work, unless you just bought your property, lowering the military rate doesn't really help you because if your property is increased in value, as everyone has, you're paying 3% more, the cap, if you're a homestead property. So, it doesn't really matter that they lowered this military that's up here. If we're down here catching up, you're still going to be paying 3% more every single year. So, until we look at some of that and how to address it, I don't see our taxes coming down. It's daunting. I hope that that sort of answered your question.
Thank you, Marcy.
You did a good job with that. Have you discussed, as commissioners, You did a good job with that. Have you discussed, as commissioners, the, the impending construction of all these homes that are surrounding us, and the consequences of that for the community? Have you been discussing that at all? Because we've been talking about it. We're just wondering where all the traffic is going to go.
That is a huge, that's a large amount of my time is spent on that very issue right there. And this is Lion Road, right? I have to get my bearings a little bit. Like, where are we in relation to the Ag Reserve?
South, south.
South.
It starts at Clintmore and goes north of Clintmore.
So we're in the Ag Reserve now?
No.
Oh.
We're south of it.
We're south of it?
Like Sprint's.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. It's been a long day, and he drove me here, so I wasn't really paying attention. I apologize. So yeah, we're, we're close to the areas in the Ag Reserve and any of these other ones that you're talking about. I can only speak for myself on this right now. I'm sure everyone knows the infamous GL Home Swap deal is coming up next week. And I've lost a lot of sleep over that one. I've had probably close to 30 different meetings on this one issue. And it, to me, is, is we're at a crossroads at, at this point, where if we do this or not. And I just want to tell you, I've told GL, and they're coming at me again tomorrow. I've told them that I don't, I don't like it. I don't support this. We have areas that we put out there for preserve. They, they paid for this area. It's a 60/40 split. They paid for it to go into preserve. And now they want to build on it and send that preserve up to Waxahachie or some other place or whatever, and build all of these properties here. And, you know, they're going to do this wonderful water project for the North County. And I was like, well, what about South County? Well, you know, it's basically, the houses will sell for more here. And that's why they want to build here. And I'm like, yeah, well, they'll sell for more here, but we're crowded. Like, it's, it's, it's enough, you know? And if we're going to allow for more development in this area, I suggested we work more towards commerce or, or businesses that support the people who already live here, not adding additional residences to an area that's already pretty crowded and doesn't have enough amenities. And when I say amenities, even like having a car wash. Getting, getting stuff like that built in this area is extremely difficult. And it's not as profitable as a large new gated community would be to the builder. But it's, at this point, they've built the communities, the people have moved here, and they're asking for the stuff. They want the stuff. They want the, even the schools and the synagogues that is part of this deal that they're coming at me for. We can allow for civic uses, and it's definitely something that should be built in the community. But it doesn't have to come along with 1,300 additional residences. That's going to be another gated community that's more traffic, more water, more, more wastewater, more power grid, I mean, all of it. Everything that you know comes with it. And we have to count for fire rescue. We have to count for what it does for the school systems. All the things that go into that, we have to consider. And honestly, we're crowded down here. And if we don't leave some of this space open, like, it's gone forever. And I don't want to be a part of that.
You mentioned rescue. Weren't you in a little bit of a video with a bunch of folks learning how to do all the things? I, I heard some things about you.
I'm nervous for what you heard, but I did get to be fireman for a day with our Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. They did their best to make sure we appreciate their jobs and how hard they worked, and how hot those suits are. Even though I did it in February, it was warm. And I was happy to get out of all that gear. And not to mention, it's heavy. And, I mean, I'm, I'm tall, but I, I don't necessarily weigh a lot. So when they added the almost 100 pounds on there, and they put the oxygen pack on me, I'm like, all right, I got this. They have it on my hips. And then he let go. I didn't realize he was holding most of the weight. I was like, whoa. So, so very much appreciate everything that they did. I did get to cut up a car with the jaws alive. I didn't get to rappel off the building. I was feeling very full of myself and thought that would be great, but that wasn't allowed that day. But yeah, I have had the opportunity, because of this job, to get to go and tour all of the facilities. I mean, with the sheriff, I actually have a tour coming up shortly with the sheriff's department, where I'm going to get to go on the helicopter and the marine unit, get to visit, you know, all of the different places that wouldn't be available otherwise. All of the parks and recreation, the airport is a big deal. I have, I've had a partial tour there. I have a bigger one coming up, also with fire rescue, because there's a separate fire rescue that works just at the airport, because that's a different animal altogether. But yeah, they, they let me participate. And I, you know, taking full advantage of every opportunity I get to just get right in there and even, like, cut into a person's lung. I got to do that. It wasn't a real person, but...
Commissioner Woodward, world traveler, if it's only in Boca Raton. Bravo. Any other questions? Fred, do you want to...
Commissioner Woodward, thanks for coming to Century Village. Several times in your speech, which I realize it's hard to go from your general speech to local, you, you reference serving us and, and representing us. But you, you're not really our commissioner. We're in District 5. And I think Vice Mayor Sacks might be a little surprised to hear you saying that. But I'm sure you didn't, you didn't mean it in any territorial way. Can you please define your district? What is your number? And what are the geographic range? And also, I know you're new on the commission. Do you know how these districts are divided? Are they divided by population, by, by square footage? Do they have a redistrict? Take it away.
Okay, yes. My district is District 4. I am considered one of the coastal districts. I'm east of the Turnpike in Boca, up to Clintmore, and then I cut over to Military Trail and keep going north. I have the coast up to South Palm Beach. So from the Broward Line to South Palm Beach, that's all me. There is a cutout in Boynton and Delray, which goes to Matt Bernard. So there's like a little U shape. And then I pick back up on the other side and have more of Delray Beach and Boynton and Village of Golf. I have 12 municipalities in my district. I believe I have the most, yeah, because there's only 39. I have the most municipalities. Some of them are very small. I mean, I think Village of Golf has less than 1,000 residents. But it's, it's an interesting district. It's considered a donor district, because most of what is in my district, we, we pay county taxes. But the cities actually do most of the infrastructure type work, like police and fire. We have Boca, Delray, Boynton, they all have their own of those. So a lot of what is paid into the county doesn't necessarily come back to us the same way it does in unincorporated, because you have Palm Beach County Sheriff, you have Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, and that's paid for with county dollars. So as far as how the districts are distributed, it's by population. So if you look at the map, some are going to be very, very tiny, and some are extremely large. Sarah Baxter, she's the other new Republican commissioner, she's in District 6, has the largest by far, but she goes to Belle Glade and Pahokee. And if you know, if you're ever driving that, between Belle Glade and Pahokee is a lot of farmland. Yeah, sugarcane and corn and gators. So that's her district. But it's all put that way. They did this last time. Matt Bernard has what is considered the African-American district. So his is very carved up in the middle. It's very skinny. It's hard to find. It goes up to Riviera and, or Seagr Island, actually, down to Delray Beach. And it kind of weaves its way up. Barnett, he's, he's in the new Hispanic district that was just redrawn. That's District 3. And they, that was kind of carved out to pick as much of the Hispanic population as they could get. Now, there's arguments both ways. That's called gerrymandering, you know, where they, they put the districts together to try to represent different communities. And there's arguments for and against that. I mean, I kind of feel if, if we live in a similar area geographically, like we're neighbors, and you're my neighbor, if we choose to live next to each other, the race doesn't really come into it, and our interests are going to be aligned, because we live in that area. There is an argument to be made, but for some of these communities, Hispanic and the African-American community, in order for them to make sure they have a representative that represents them, you kind of have to carve up the map. So it won't happen again for 10 years. It happens after a census year. So we had the 2020 census, and then the redistricting happened last year. So the next time will be the 2030 census, and the 2031, they'll be redrawing. And I won't be a part of that, because hopefully, my job will be done.
Thank you for that excellent answer.
That was a terrific answer. Thank you so much. Really, I mean, really. Phenomenal. I mean, your clarity and the way in which you express yourself is, is understandable for those of us who may not really know what a commissioner does or the entire structure. I've been struggling trying to understand structure here. I know, I know New York City. But this is like a, a new world, really. It is. And you did a beautiful job in, in explaining so much of it. And I want to acknowledge some of the folks who are here.
I was hoping to.
Oh, of course I will. So Jody Schwartz, you don't know who you are. She goes like this, huh? She is the, she's the REC Director of District 5.
Oh, no.
She was the REC. She's now working on a very important project with Roe Grossman, I know. Well, I can't help that, Jody. I'm sorry. And sitting next to her is Mr. Rektar, who is going to run again. And I think we have, Jody, would you please, Jody?
Jody?
Jody.
Josie?
Josie or Jody?
That's Jody. I'm Jody.
That's Josie. This is Jessica.
I don't mean Jessica. I meant Jody, yes. Because she mentioned you, you're, you're working with her. And of course, I have to mention Jessica, because she's District 5 now. Can't help, we know that. We must know that. And then I come to this table, Cheryl Mullings, Secretary of the Republican Executive Committee. And I know these women, she comes. And Elaine Resinhan handles all of the voter registration, also a member of the committee. And can I, can I forget John Fisher?
Oh, no.
He's going to be running for office. I like that. I like it.
What office?
For this District 5.
Thinking, thinking about it, I think it's very hard.
No, come on. You spend too much time, baby. It's you that's running. Of course, you, Michael, you were introduced by your wife. So that's Mr. Woodward. He's always, he's also a member of our, our estate. And we have a, a identified and, and acknowledged candidate for Congressional District 22. And I am so happy that he's doing it again. Dan, would you come up and say a few words? Dan Francese?
Did I, did I identify everybody?
So before I start, Commissioner, that was fantastic. We are so fortunate to have you. Thank you so much. So I'm Dan Francese, and last week I announced I'm running for Congress again. This is my palm card that I've left all around here. And I was the Republican nominee two years ago in the, in the same district, District 22. I ran against Lois Frankel, the terrible incumbent. Exactly. I hear that all the time. Can't say her name without getting that response. And I got 45% of the vote against her, which is by far the best any Republican's ever done against her. And I did it as a first-time, unknown rookie candidate. So in that race, we proved that the seat is winnable by a Republican. And everybody, next year, I'm going to win it. We need to win these seats back. We need to take back control of the Congress, because look at the awful mess they're making of our country. It becomes worse and worse every day. And I'll try, hopefully, come back over the next few months. And each, each time, I'll talk about a different topic. But rest assured, it's getting worse every day, and we got to get good people up there to straighten things out. So if you'd like to learn more about me, you can read the palm cards that I left out there. Also, my website, my new website is, is up and running. And you can see the link to it. It's danforusa.com. If you're interested in getting involved in the campaign, you can sign up there. We have a sign-in page. And yes, every good website has a Donate Now button. And if you're, I can't be shy about asking for funding. What we found is it costs a lot of money to run a successful congressional campaign. We're going to be much more aggressive about it early on here to try to build up a big enough war chest, so we can win this seat back for the people of Palm Beach County. So again, it's Dan Francese, danforusa.com. Thank you, everybody, and God bless America.
This club needs to grow. We've been doing a pretty good job. But we need more members. We need more active members. We're headed for a, a very exciting year. 2024 is around the corner. That's a presidential election, as all of you know, you've been hearing about it certainly. And we will need every person to put in all of your effort to help us keep what bred?
Palm Beach County.
Boca, Palm Beach County, and Florida, for sure. We have to keep it bred. I think we have the values, the, the sense of what is right and what's wrong in schools and elsewhere. We need to do the right things. And we need, we need to help each other. That young woman, I call everyone younger than me young, that young woman, Marcy, you know, she stepped up to the plate, and she won, probably surprising herself as well. I have that sense. But what a learner she is. And you heard how she is learning the job, because she knows that's what she has to do to represent us. Now, while she's not our direct representative, she's sitting on a commission that does work for us. So I think we all need to, to put in our effort together to continue to do what we've been doing. And I hope you'll come to our meetings. This is a wonderful crowd. I know that we are in, in great competition with everything that's going on tonight. And we hope you'll continue to come and work with us. Join our club. We now have to ask for a $5 donation, so that we can pay for the, the venue that we're in right now. It is an appropriate one. It's a good one. And we're happy to continue here, or we, we can afford to stay. So thank you all for coming. And I want John, John, next time you come, you're going to tell us that you're, you're in, in, you know, getting there, and you're, you've made a decision, because we want you to make that decision. You have such a personality.
I will tell you this.
And a hard worker. What?
I will tell you this, there is a very, very good chance that I will make the decision that you'll like.
Just say yes. You know, make it easy. Say yes. Because we want you to do that. And you too, sir.
I already said yes. Oh, man.
All right. Thank you, all of you. There's coffee and pastries outside. Don't leave yet. Have, get to know each other. We need to work together. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mort. Glad to see you.